Choir this here tonight?
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. Car ton boss é porté les pays, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. We acknowledge that we are gathered on the traditional territory of the Haunis-Haunasani peoples, the Mohawks of Akwasasni, the original keepers of this land. As settlers, we are grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Roll call, please, madame clerk.
Mayor Justin Towneau.
Present.
Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Maurice Dupel.
Present.
Sarah Good.
Present.
Caroline Ebar.
Present.
Councillors Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
Ici.
Denise Abourain.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
And Fran Gujo.
Present.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, an emotion to adopt the agenda is presented for this evening. Councillor McIntosh, second, and Councillor Bennett, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Any disclosures of interest for tonight? Councillor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not participate in the debate or in the town hall meeting this evening as the subject property is part of a outstanding proposal that the organization I work for has been heavily involved in.
Thank you. Any further disclosures of interest? Okay, thank you. Before we get to the presentations, our town hall policy requires that I go over some of the basic rules. So this evening, while staff are present, they cannot participate, they cannot answer questions, similar to the last town hall that we had here. Presentations are meant to be limited to three minutes or at my discretion. Typically, you are required to register to speak, however, I will recognize anyone who wants to speak tonight, but we will be recognizing those who registered first in order. Once they've completed their speaking, I'll open the floor. If you do decide to speak tonight and you're not registered, I would ask that when you come to the mic, please state your name for the public record. One other thing I want to touch on as well, at the town hall meeting, council cannot advance any business as well. That means we cannot make any motions tonight, except for the ones that we made before, the procedural motions. We cannot accept any sort of documentation. That has to be done separately from this meeting. Madam clerk?
So the future of 504 Fourth Street East. The first registered speakers is a duo, Ian Bowering and George Lewis. If you can please come to the seats at the table right in front of you, and you will see on the unit in front of you, there are two buttons to press. The one with the little person is the one you want to press, and that will turn on the speaker for you.
Yeah, I did.
Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Hello? Okay. I was asked to speak on behalf of this group, and I'm kind of behind. I agree with the motion that they're making and the ideas. Dear member, dear mayor and members of Cornwall City Council, this is regarding the use of the former Bob Turner Memorial Center and the Joe St. Denis Field. We, the undersigned residents of Cornwall, while understanding and supporting the need for more housing in Cornwall, wish to ask Cornwall Council to consider other more suitable sites such as those listed below. I think everyone got one of these sheets. We strongly express our opposition to the building of housing on the unit of the former Bob Turner Memorial Center and Joe St. Denis Field for the following reasons. This land has been used for recreational purposes by the citizens of Cornwall for over 120 years. Outfitted with floodlights, it is an active site, used for both daytime and evening activities, making it uniquely inclusive recreational facility for all of Cornwall's residents. It would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to replicate. When the Memorial Center arena was constructed, it was dedicated to the men and women who gave up many years of their lives, in some cases paying the supreme sacrifice to preserve our freedom in World War II. When Recreation Director Bob Turner died, I gotta say, I wish I would have been able to work with that man, and I wish I would have gotten to know him as I found out the history about him. Just thought I'd, those of you who know what I do. His name was added to the building as a fitting tribute to a man who did so much for our youth and the community. We believe that there is no better location than this historic, active, centrally located site for an inclusive youth center. We believe that the continued use of the sports field coupled with the youth center would be a fitting lasting tribute to those who served in World War II and to Bob Turner. We also believe that to build housing here would remove one of the few remaining and much-needed substantial green spaces in the downtown core. We ask you to consider that's a removal would be environmentally detrimental, particularly given that we have so many derelict sites throughout the city which can be used instead. Furthermore, we cannot understand how the fact the site may be contaminated makes it unsuitable for a youth center, yet appropriate for residential use. Shouldn't level of exposure be considered? We find something missing in the reasoning that it would be unacceptable to potentially expose youth to toxins for the few hours each week that they would be on site, and yet expose affordable housing residents to the same potential toxins for many more hours each week year-round. For these reasons, we respectfully request that the city preserve this active green space. In honor of our proud former citizens, we also request council to seek input from the Royal Canadian Legion and look into alternative locations before proceeding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ian, you want to add something?
I'm here with George. Is there any questions? Of course, you all know what I think, that it's very historic. It's a very historic site that should be preserved. It is heavily used, is used all the time. The other sites, well, not in the winter, but the other sites that have been suggested, Alexander Park, I don't think is suitable replacement for this, for the youth center. It's further north, it has that little highway called Ninth Street to the north, whereas this site is surrounded with people that are using it all the time. If you went up to Alexander Park and from here, then you would not have a basic park like this from Ninth Street South, and there are a lot of kids in this area. I see them every day. The, and plus Alexander Park is subject to flooding, so I think it's a mistake. To move the, one of the things that concerns me is, when I did the petition, I heard from several sources, enough sources to say numerous, that yes, the football field could be moved to the Bob Turner, to the, sorry, to the Benson Center, but how's that going to be paid for? And I was told from more than one source, yes, you'll put the affordable housing, which we all agree is necessary in town, but you're going to sell the rest of it for $3 million to build the football field over in Benson Center. So residential development's going on. What concerns me is, councillors, you may not know the whole story. We don't know the whole story. I'd like to ask you respectfully to let's clear this up, because nothing is worse than this rumor, these rumors going around. We all live in Cornwall, and we know what a rumor mill can be. And so I'm asking, please, can we have some transparency here? Because there's too much silliness going around. And I'd like to preserve the historic fields.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for members of council? Councillor McIntosh?
Yeah. I was surprised to hear that it was dedicated to soldiers who had passed away, who had made the supreme sacrifice. I know when they built the Bob Turner Center, it was going to be called the Bob Turner Center, and when Bob died, they decided to call it the Bob Turner Memorial Center. I know that Alderman Keane at the time, somebody had suggested perhaps they might name it after, in recognition of the soldiers of Cornwall who had died in the First and Second World Wars, but it wasn't, I'm not aware that there was commitment to make it a memorial to First and Second World War and Korean War.
The, where I got this information, Councillor McIntosh, was when I was at the museum, we had a unpublished history of the Legion, and in this unpublished history, the author said that because we had that wonderful cenotaph to the First War, and that would do for the Second War too, but this was to be another war memorial to them, and it's in this unpublished manuscript, which is at the museum, was when I was there, and that's where I get the information. But because it took so long to build it after the war, Bob Turner was the Recreation Director at that time, so it was only a short time it was known as the Cornwall Memorial Center. And then when Bob Turner passed away, that's when they called it the Bob Turner Memorial Center. So it's only a year, in only a year difference, but originally, it was, according to the Legion's history, the, to be a memorial for youth, for the community, to be used as a memorial to the war effort, the 4,000 people that served directly in the war, and the 183, I think it's 183 servicemen who were killed during the war.
Yeah, okay, just the timing, war 145, Bob came here in 56, died in 58, about that period. I just wasn't aware that it was a commitment to what you just said, because I grew up in that neighborhood, and so did Councillor Hollingsworth, and we always called it the athletic grounds, and there was never any mention of them being sacred ground.
The, well, like I said, the information comes out of the unpublished manuscript, and interestingly enough, it was Douglas Fathrup, the grandfather of two city employees, who was the councillor at that time, that spearheaded the move. This is documented.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, no, I don't.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Not doubting you one bit, but I, I go through those back papers religiously, and I've never seen that story emerge. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to debate that with you.
No.
And also, George, you mentioned, alluded to contamination. Just, have you any knowledge of contamination that you can make me aware of?
No, I don't. But I'm sure Ian can answer that better than me. As far as that goes, I don't. My whole concern myself personally, my personal interest in this is to preserve the field and the, as a playing field for the youth, and the history that it's got behind it, the Joe St. Denis Field and the Bob Turner Memorial Center, and, and as far as that goes, I'm not going to get into that. I'll let Ian or someone else answer that.
I'm surprised to hear that. I'd like to know.
I just, we picked up the contamination because we just read from the last meeting, I think it was May 24th, that there was a possibility there was contamination. We don't know, we just heard there's a possibility.
I had alluded to that, that I had read somewhere where they had trouble with the soil, they brought in other soil. I didn't suggest there was contamination.
Oh, okay.
They had a lot of fill went in that site. Also, the Cornwall Township owned that site until 1958, then the city took it over.
Yeah, well, if that's, if that's the case, then we've made a mistake, then we apologize.
Yeah, no, that was not a mistake, I just.
Like I said, that's where we got the information.
But that doesn't take away from what your, the genesis of your ideas. You want to maintain that for the youth of Cornwall, and that's quite understandable.
Councillor Good.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for speaking and for presenting this information. I think, you know, there is a lot of history there that we're not all privy to, of course. Understanding that administration can't speak, and I have had some conversation with them about the contamination specifically, my understanding of it is more that the slab where the center was, and especially where the effluent for the cooling, like for the actual ice creation is, that that would be the concern for contamination. And it's not so much that it's appropriate to put housing on that, it would be that in the development of the site as a whole, that the decontamination of that area would be part and parcel of a development versus if a youth space were to be put in that area, that it may then require decontamination efforts, which could be very, very costly and basically eat up the entire budget. So that was my understanding, just of that specific aspect. Just to clarify that one point, I don't know if there's anything else, but I appreciate the, the feedback certainly from the community, so thank you for that.
Any further questions or comments from council? Thank you, gentlemen.
And who do we give the petition to?
The clerk will accept it.
We'll take it up here.
We managed to get 475 days.
Our second registered speaker this evening is Alex Gassien. Thank you. Alex Gassien? Alex Gassien.
Okay, if Mr. Gassien's not here, then we'll move down the list, and if he arrives, we'll put him back into the speaking schedule.
Our next registered speaker is Terry Muir.
Mr. Muir?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and guests. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight to speak about an issue close to my heart. Our youth need a place to belong, they need a place to go without fear of being told you can't stay here. It is possible that we do not have the perfect solution, but we do have the benefit of having young people in our committee that are more than willing to tell us what they want and need. We're trying to avoid the historical approach of assuming we know what a group needs, and then finding out that it didn't work, then doing it again. For perspective on this issue, I recall speaking to friends recently, and I put it in this manner. When you turn 13, our society tends to not want you around. This is a reality. If we treated our seniors the same way we treat our youth, it would never be accepted. Imagine that when you turn 65, you're no longer welcome in malls. You are also not permitted to hang out in Lamroo Park, and if you decide to hang out in large numbers, you will likely see police presence, and you may be asked to disperse. Also, we may judge you, choose to judge you if you stay home and play video games all day. We began this dream hoping for even temporary use of the Bob Turner Arena property to build a park that will open to all, is designed for young people to chill out, play basketball, play chess, and maybe even grow a garden. Then we were told that there are other plans for the entire athletic fields. After some communication with our city administration, an offer was made that we could coexist. Upon further conversation, we were also offered Alexander Park, which we could begin almost immediately to add an area for young people to chill out. We were also told that we could look at a second development of the Bob Turner Joe St. Denis property to further enhance our offering to our young people. What a great solution. Two areas designed for everyone but geared towards young people, and we're ready to take on that challenge. Then the reality hit me, and this is me personally, not necessarily a view of the committee. Once we tear up the athletic fields, the park space is gone forever. So I'm torn between the very real need for housing and the permanent loss of green space. We refer to this as 504 Fourth Street East, but in reality, it is a very old location of the original athletic fields. We need to consider all of these factors when deciding on the correct use, the need for today, the history of yesterday, as well as what best serves the community today and moving forward. It is a tough decision, but I wish you the vision to make the right decision, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Councillor Hollingsworth.
Just in FYI, when my, growing up, my mom referred to it as the lacrosse ground, for those of you who keep track of that kind of thing. Of course, for us, it was whatever my mom said. Just one question with regards to your funding, and I don't know if this is valid or not, but it was, I've heard that there are some limitations, there are some restrictions in terms of what you can do with that funding. Is that true? Like you can't build things with that funding? You have to offer programming? Is that valid or?
There is definitely some gray areas in there. We didn't jump into this, when we started this, sorry, through Mr. Mayor, when we started this, we started this without any funding, without the knowledge of any funding being available, with the intention of raising the funds to do it. And, you know, then an opportunity came along for some federal funds through the Building Safer Communities Initiative, and there are a number of restrictions on it, but that is not in any way going to be our only source of funding for our project.
Okay, so you have a fundraising plan? Is that what I'm gathering?
Yes, we do. We can't present it simply because we haven't finished the design.
Sure, that's fine, I understand. The other thing is, originally, when the committee was kicking around the idea of like a basketball court or courts, was the thinking that the slab is already there and we can just kind of utilize that slab rather than build a brand-new slab? Is that kind of the logic at the time, or is that motivated as to why you thought of that as a, as an ideal spot?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is definitely an attribute. The main reason that we looked at that property was visibility of it. You know, it's wide open, the police patrol that go by there constantly, all day long, and so we want it visibly for our young people, so that, you know, we can keep an eye on them and make sure they're safe, and make sure everything is being taken care of. And the benefit of having the old tennis courts there would be just that, a benefit. You know, basically, we were of the opinion that we could drill a hole, throw in a couple of poles, and we got a basketball court. And so, you know, we didn't have to think about that portion of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Muir.
Further questions or comments from council? Councillor McIntosh?
Yeah, Terry, I was always in the, I guess I missed a memo on the Alexander Park thing. I understood it was going to be half set aside for affordable housing and half for a park which would involve your project. Was that the original idea?
Through you, Mr. Mayor? Yes, that was the original conversation that we had, that was our hopes originally, and then we had a meeting recently with members of administration. The mayor was there, Sarah Good was there, and we talked about a secondary location. There was a few different offers, some of them just wouldn't work in any way, shape, or form, but the proposal was brought out that we could look at using Alexander Park almost immediately, and in the long term, still look at, looking at Bob Turner's property, right? Because, I mean, let's face it, we have a lot of parks in this city, we have no parks really dedicated to teenagers. So the only thing better than one park would be two.
Yeah. Something you said early in your address, you said something about if teenagers gather in large numbers in a park, the police show up and I'm looking at Constable McGregor and Sergeant Coulter.
I'm sure they will attest to the fact that they get a considerable amount of calls for teens loitering, or misbehaving, or being noisy, or, you know, there's, and I think that's just natural behavior, having been a teenager once upon a time, a long time ago. We can get together and hang out, but shortly afterwards, we start to get bored, and we start to do, you know, horsing around and things, and some people don't find it acceptable, right? Noise levels, or language, or whatever it might be. And inherently, a lot of times, it ends up with a call to the police to ask people to disperse.
Okay, okay, I was just, I wasn't aware that that was a thing that, police an issue?
Well, I think that's where a lot of the stuff like Lamroo Park, Banshow area and stuff came from.
Yeah, okay.
Again, my opinion.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Councillor Guenjo, then Councillor McDonald.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you very much for what you're doing for those young guys. It's very important, and I just want to mention that I fully support what this kind of project, it's very important. I'm a big fan of all activities that can help to decrease pressure or stress in our community, and I fully understand that it's what this project is purposed to. So congratulations for that, and congratulations for the fundraising that you did, that's a very good job. Just quick question, I just want to understand, fully understand what's going on here. Please, can you explain to me, what are the criterias that brings you to the Bob, the Bob former land?
Through the mayor to you. The biggest part of it was the location, of course, but the visibility was the number one issue on our side, okay? Whenever we were meeting as adults to talk about it. Now, just the attraction of what's there, being the football field beside it, you know, we're hoping that maybe some of the youth that don't necessarily get to play sports, you know, a lot of times it's by financial reasons, or they may not know how to get involved or whatever, and, you know, we thought maybe that would be a good influence for them, seeing it, and there are opportunities for youth that can't afford to play to be subsidized, whether it's by service clubs or by the Wildcats themselves, which I had a very lengthy conversation with Kirby Kaplan today and we discussed that. And also, with the Armory's being across the road, we figure another good influence. And, you know, it's, but upon speaking with our young people that are on our board, they're happy to go up to Alexander Park, you know? But the reality is, is that there's no reason why we can't have multiple parks to help them out, separate some of the groups anyway. I mean, it's like the icing on the cake for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Let's say we have a round table with the first group that are defending this land. Can, are you open to sit around the table to have a discussion with them?
Definitely.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to Terry. Thanks for coming, Terry. And I've got two questions. The first one is, there's reference in the report we had from administration, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, to Matisse Park. And you haven't mentioned that, and I'm wondering what your take on the suitability of Matisse Park for teen-centered park would be.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't work in any way. There's no visibility, there's no sightlines through it, there's no traffic going by it. It's, it's not conducive. We've looked at it at length, we've tried to find a positive in it, but, you know, when we did speak to administration, you know, we all agreed that it really, it didn't fit the bill.
So my next question would be about programming. You mentioned that presumably there'd be kids who haven't had a chance to play basketball or just had never have, but with a little encouragement, they might actually shoot a few hoops or whatever. So are you anticipating that there would be personnel, like a sports director or somebody hired by somebody or volunteers to, to get programs going and basically, I guess, supervise or help get kids who aren't engaged, engaged in activities?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There is no current expectation of anybody being hired, whether it be a city employer or whatever. We have had quite a number of organizations come forth and offer services to come, but at the end of the day, we're going to listen to the kids. They're going to tell us what they want, and, you know, overwhelmingly, they have said they, they want a place to chill out, to not have to be concerned that somebody's going to come along and say, "You can't be here. Move along," right? And so if programming fits in it, then we definitely have volunteers willing to step up and help out in many different organizations.
Thank you.
Councilor Good?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Terry, for speaking to this. I think all of us around the table, and I think pretty much everyone in this room agrees, there's a need for a youth space. It's a clear gap in our community and we need to address it. There's obviously constraints around the Joe Santini, Bob Turner field that I don't know, I certainly wasn't aware of upon your initial presentation, and I don't think most of us were either. In keeping with that, and with, I don't want to make it more urgent than it is, but it's urgent, you know, and, and the way that things work in the city, it often takes a long time for programs to get going. It's just the reality of it. So I agree with what you're saying as far as, there is no reason to limit this to one park, and I think youth need multiple spaces throughout our community, but it has to start somewhere. And so wherever that place may be, if it's Alexander Park, great. If there's a space in Matisse, and if there's a space in Lamroo, all the better. Like, there's no reason to say, "No, you can't set up some chess tables and," you know, like, all of these things that you're asking for, I think are reasonable, and I think that there's a clear need and desire in our community to have them. So from our meeting that we had, you know, full transparency, there will have to be some development to that land. It's inevitable. You can't just have a slab there forever. That's, no one's using that. And so to invest in and to build a youth space there, knowing that there's inevitably going to be something, and that's still up for debate and negotiation or whatever the case is, it would, wouldn't necessarily work to establish something, a structure, and then have to demolish that or move it or whatever the case is. So I'm in fully support, I'm fully in support of whatever we can do to expedite this and get something going as soon as we can. And if we have a location now that we can use and get something going, I am in support of that. I hope our community can stand behind that, just a space where youth can exist without needing to be participating in anything or needing to kind of justify their own existence. And when it comes to supervision, I urge my colleagues to think about how, how they were when they were thirteen. I think most of us were babysitting other kids at that age. I don't really remember my parents ever spending much mind to what I was doing from the ages of thirteen and beyond, and they were great parents, I'll just say that much. So, so I think, you know, as we get older, we kind of, we tend to lose our faith in the capacity of youth, but they're, they're pretty capable. So I support this, and I'm very hopeful that we can find a happy medium that's going to make everyone feel good about the solution. I don't know what that is exactly, but I think we're on the right track. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think so.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from council? Councilor Gardner?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Terry, one of the things that impressed me when you first came here about the Bob Turner site was the fact that it was central. And to me, that was important in order to bring a whole bunch of kids in to one park to have fun. And that's what we did when we were young. We had fun. My parents opened the door and said, "Out you go," and it was tag or hide-and-seek or chasing each other on bicycles. I think the Bob Turner is still the right place to be. One of the questions I had at another discussion was the jeopardy of the funding. That really frightens me. I, I agree with Councilor Good that we need to do something fast, and we need to do something for the kids to keep them busy. They'll keep themselves busy. That's, that's what they do. That's what kids used to do, and that's what they do today. I hope that we can find a way to use the Bob Turner Center for this. I really feel that that's the place it should be. I don't know if it can be in combination with something else. In terms of contamination, I would never, never approve any site, whether it's Bob Turner or anywhere else, until I found out that it was not contaminated and not in danger of making people sick, whether adults or kids. I thank you for coming forward. I know you keep coming forward, and that's a good thing. That's why you're, you've, you've got a good following and people respect you. Thank you for coming here. I hope it ends up at the Bob Turner in combination with someone, some, some other, something else. Something has to go in there. It's, it's a, it's a lost piece of property right now. So for youth, yeah. Combination, I don't know yet. There's a lot more that we have to learn about that site in particular, in particular. Thanks for taking the time to get a petition together, too. That says a lot when you come walking into a door, a councilor's door. Thank you for being here again. And George, thank you for making your presentation.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, to address the petition, these gentlemen were involved in the petition. It wasn't one that I spearheaded in any, any way. You know, there's definitely merit to it, but I'm not going to take any, any credit from that because it wasn't my project.
You heard the saying, "It takes a village," and you've got a village behind you. But I'd like you to answer the question about the funding being in jeopardy. Are there any rules right now that would make that funding disappear if we don't move our butts and get something done?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's unusual to think that funding comes with strings attached to it. But there's so many attached to these dollars, I feel like a marionette some days, right? But, you know, I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. I think it's always in jeopardy. The reality is, is that we need to use a portion of those funds up this year, or I do believe we will lose a big chunk of it.
Okay.
So the time is of the essence. That being said, you know, I don't pretend for a second that we have the ability to build our dream park within the next three months.
No.
You know, it's, reality is that it's going to take us some time, but we need to start somewhere. We need to make a plan. We need to be able to put things on paper and say, "This is what we're going to build." And none of that can happen until we have a definite home or two homes, you know? And do I know what the perfect thing is for 504 Fourth Street East? I, I don't, you know? I mean, I see the need for housing, you know? Because I deal with it, but I also see the reality of when it's gone, it's like waterfront. You know, when it's gone, it's gone forever. So I don't envy anybody sitting around this table having to make this decision.
I heard a rumor, and there are a lot of rumors, that there is a conspiracy with council. What, that ain't happening? What we want to do is make sure that we do it right for the kids. That's the only thing that I'm thinking. I've heard about a conspiracy. It's not there.
I haven't heard that one yet.
Oh, good. Well, if you do, let me, let me know who it is so I can speak to it.
Can you tell me about it afterwards?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. You know, I keep hearing once in a while the people talking about, "What are we going to do for supervision?" In my teen years, we hung out at Alguire Park, which was completely surrounded by homes, ten, twelve, fifteen of us a night all summer long with a big radio sitting on a rock, blasting rock tunes all night, and nobody ever called the police on us. As a matter of fact, I think they were happy that they knew where we all were. So I would think that would apply now if you knew where your, where your kids are. It's kind of a comforting feeling. I just wanted to be clear that the youth did vote unanimously to use Alexander Park as a phase one, if I, right? So that, so, you know, we're talking about we have to use some funding in this year. I think that's a great place to start. Let's get that going. And the funding is, is over three years, but some has to be spent this year, and the long-term funding isn't lost, it just has to be used within the three years. So if we, if we, let's get started on phase one, in my opinion. Just get something going, and then, and then we can continue to look at the Bob Turner site, because we don't know what's under that slab, and if it's refrigerant, I don't want my, I wouldn't want my kids playing on it either, so we got to make sure that's the right spot, because as Councilor Gardner just mentioned, we, we got to get this right. I think if we do it half-assed and letting the youth down again is not a good situation for anybody. I do sit on the board of the SDC, and I do know that, you know, when speaking with Councilor Hebert, that that organization is committed to making this happen, right? And so there's available funds and they're going to support all of the, of the fundraising efforts that'll be going forward. So there's just like so much support. I can't see how this can't happen. It doesn't make sense to me. But, I mean, let's get started on phase one. The kids unanimously voted for it. If they're in support of it, who am I to tell them we're not going to do it? So, you know, I appreciate that everybody's here again very much, and I'm in favor of getting this going as soon as we can. But I do want to make sure that we make sure that the site that we would like to see the dream park on is safe. And if that's safe, then I'm all, I'm all in as well. Thank you.
Further questions or comments from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'll open up the floor. If there's anyone here present tonight that would like to speak, they're welcome to approach the, the mic. Again, just ask that you give your first and last name before speaking, so we have it for the record. Kyle Bergeron?
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Joe Santini's historic park that should be built up and not torn down. While housing is undoubtedly needed in the city, tearing down historic grounds and destroying our city's history is a poor way to do it and very short-sighted. The proposal to move a sports field to a part of the city where the ground is contaminated and beside a former garbage hill that stinks during the summer is a terrible idea that should be torn out of the Recreation Master Plan. It is one of the worst ideas to come out of this city in years. No sports facilities that are played in the summer should be built in that area until Big Ben is gone, and I don't think Big Ben is going anywhere. This also creates an issue of inequity as sports fields are moved to the richest neighborhoods in this city and torn away from the people that need them the most. This will be a second sports facility that the East End loses. I can personally attest, as an SD&amp;G Highlander, a former SD&amp;G Highlander, that we used to walk across the street to the Bob Turner to play hockey every day, and we stopped doing that as soon as that arena got torn down. We stopped playing hockey pretty much altogether after that. And there's many people who stopped playing hockey because the arenas were taken out of one part of town and moved to another part of town. Now, I'm not knocking the Benson Center. Benson Center is a great facility. I use it. It's great. Council can easily build a $3 million football field in its current location. It does not need to go to a new location, and one that would only serve the richer members of this community. Football is traditionally a sport for people of all ages and all sizes. And it is a very accessible sport that kids can walk to in the center of town that they will lose if you move it to the West End. This is also an attack on the young men in our community who need these outlets as a place where they get mentorship from other men in the community. Young men in this community do not get mentorship at school as a profession is dominated by 90% women, and that is an attack on the fine women who do teaching. I come from a family of teachers. But a lot of men who come from broken homes, single families, rely on these sports outlets to get the male mentorship that they need and to keep them off the street. This move will be devastating for lower-income neighborhoods in the center of our town and once again, moving amenities to the richest part of town. And to speak on representation, there's not a single councilor here who is a male under the age of forty that has a platform to destroy a historic park and to tear that away from the young men in this community. Further to my point, the best use for the site would be to upgrade the football field as-is. It is a historic athletic ground where there are many stories throughout the years of football being played there and other sports. We could clean up the site and build a state-of-the-art sports center, training center, for all for all of the sports groups in the city. There is currently not enough locations for training for youth in this city. We cannot get space at the Benson Center. The high schools are all booked up. We need another location for the sports groups in this community to train. There is a market for it. And if we're talking about building housing, perhaps the Benson Center should be used. It is close to all amenities. It is close to schools. It is close to shopping. It is close to restaurants. I think it's a much more suitable location for housing than in one of the only green spaces in the center of town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Counselor Good.
Thanks through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what you're saying and where you're coming from. And my first reaction to this was a little bit of heartbreak because we all know we need housing, but it is very sad to think of losing inner-city green space. I don't know if there are alternatives. I know this is part of the recreational master plan, but it's not written in stone. So I appreciate your feedback and thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, thanks, Kyle, for your presentation. I know your family has a great history with that park. The Bergeron family. I agree that there were plans at one time to upgrade the field to make it more suitable for football. They do have, they did have a problem with drain each at one time. I take one exception, though. When you discuss, we moved from athletic field to the Benson Center that were catering to the rich. I didn't realize I lived in a rich area. The West End, I assume you're talking about. I didn't think the registration of football mattered where you lived. Am I misreading you on that? It doesn't, the location doesn't make it available to rich people.
It doesn't, it doesn't. I can tell you right now, there are a number of people that I, that people in my program, who we arrange, get driven down to Legion Park. Because, you know, if you live in the north end of town, that's not accessible. But I have a vast number of people who only play baseball because they can walk to the park. And that is certainly true of football as well. Now, what the percentage on that is, I don't know, but it definitely does affect people. And that particular location at the Benson Center isn't the most walkable location based on population size versus where the Bob Turner is in a downtown core near a large amount of people in the city of Cornwall. It's one of the most walkable locations in the entire city. It's one of the most central parks. Where the Benson Center, not so much. And as somebody who does live in Riverdale, it's super convenient to take my kid to the Benson Center, you know, last minute on a Saturday morning, after I get him wrangled into the car to like hurry to his hockey game or whatever's going on.
Yeah, it's just, it struck me is that we'd be turning into a rich man's sport if we relocated to the west end of the city. I just don't see it that way. I'd like to look at the registration of football and see where the numbers come from.
Yeah, absolutely. But it does make it more difficult for people to get to the sports and it will put it out of reach for some people.
I get your point on, I get your point, but when we get into 16 and 17 and 18-year-olds playing football, I really don't think it matters where it is.
Probably not for that age.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern for certain parts of the city and disadvantaged people and where we have the facilities. I agree with you completely on that one. Anyway, thanks for your presentation, Kyle.
Further questions or comments from council? Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kyle, two things that, when I was on the Recreation Committee, we tried and tried and tried to get into the high school gymnasiums for the kids to play basketball. The school boards would not allow us in there. So it's got nothing to do whether they're busy or not. The fact of the matter is they didn't want kids in there that didn't belong to the school. Secondly, the Bob Turner Center, I can remember, again, I was on council at the time, and it was becoming dangerous. The supports for that building were metal and they were rusted into the ground. And something had to be done. Initially, we were going to attach one rink to the Bob Turner. But at one point, the Bob Turner would have had to come down because it wasn't safe anymore. So did it end up in the West End? Am I rich, poor? I'm on a pension. I live in Riverdale. I'm not a rich person. I don't care where the kids play as long as they have a place to play. As far as hockey is concerned, my grandson is a hockey player. It costs him $300 bucks just for a stick. So imagine the skates and the paraphernalia that comes with it. It's not a poor man's sport. It's a who-can-afford sport. Football, the kids are lucky in town because most of the equipment is given to them by the organization. The Bob Turner Center, that piece of property wouldn't have been big enough for what we planned for skating with. And there was no other place that we could do it except by the property that Don Tar owned at the time that came, went to another group. That place is a good place for recreation because there was room for the rinks. There is room for a football field. There's room for a whole lot of other things in there. And we've opened the road into there to make it easier to get to the Benson Center. Thanks for coming and thanks for caring. I really appreciate that you care.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Further questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Kyle. See, Alex Katini has joined us. Alex, I'd invite you to take the seat.
Apologies, I got the dates wrong. I thought it was on Wednesday. So sorry I missed the beginning of the meeting and I was hoping to hear what other people had to say. I just really wanted to come and speak in favor of what is actually proposed here, which is to build housing on the Bob Turner site as well as to potentially convert Joe St. Dennis Field into a proper park, a community park. I think we are in a housing crisis. There are people living in tents. And we're in a situation where fundamentally, the province is selling us snake oil. They're telling us that you can build so much market rate housing that it will dramatically reduce the cost of housing. This won't happen. The only way we're going to get affordable housing is if the government or nonprofits builds it. And that is especially true for low-income people. And we forget sometimes that Cornwall is a poor city, is home to some of the poorest neighborhoods in Ontario. And I think the Bob Turner site is a vacant site within walking distance, not necessarily ideally walking distance of two grocery stores as well as downtown. It's service land that the city already owns. Fundamentally, it is a good spot for infill housing. It is inside the borders of a 230-year-old city. If that's not a place where we can, should be building new housing, I don't know what is. I think also, the current field, to me, is a terrible park. I, you know, I appreciate that football fields are important, but it is a park that serves one group of users for a small portion of the year. I think there's a great opportunity here to build a proper community park for a diversity of users. You could have a dog run. You could have, you know, jungle gyms. You could have community gardens. You could have, it's a large space that really should be designed for everyone on a year-round basis. And I think that the football field could very easily be relocated. But I would also maybe caution that I do, for meeting the staff report about the youth space, it did not really seem like a very viable proposition just because of the costs of remediating the site. And, you know, I work in, as a planner, not for City Cornwall, but anytime you do something like that, the costs can be much higher than you think. So, you know, we're potentially looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So what money is left over there? However, you could very easily design a park that would be designed for everyone of all ages. It might not be exactly what's envisioned, but I think that the city should really think big on this site and should really think holistically. And I think that so far, the city has been quite ambitious on building new housing and building it directly at a time when our federal and provincial governments have dropped the ball for 30 years. And it should not fall to municipalities, but it has. And I think that the city needs to take every opportunity it has to build new housing. Because as I said, there's people living in tents in one of the richest countries in the world. People deserve a decent place to live. Any opportunity we have to build housing, especially infill housing within the old borders of the city, that is a great spot. It's, you know, I think that one of the issues here is there, I think it would have been very helpful to maybe have a bit more of a developed concept plan to provide people. Because I don't, to me, it's not entirely clear what's proposed here. Perhaps this was, in a sense, perhaps premature. However, you know, it doesn't mean it's not a good, you know, it is also good to consult people early. Yeah, I think those would be my thoughts on this issue. I apologize, I didn't hear other people speak, but...
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Counselor McDonald and Counselor Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I really appreciate your comments, Alex, especially because I think of all the presentations, I've heard yours takes into account the fact that this is one huge patch of land capable of supporting more than one initiative, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could easily just develop the Bob Turner site with something, I don't know. Stack townhouses might be a really good fit for there. Fits in with the neighborhood scale. And convert the entire existing playing field to a park. And I think that would be a great asset because the old parts of Cornwall are not going to get any new parks. So we need to make sure the parks we have get better.
Yeah.
And are designed for more people.
So now, you're saying the residential part maybe should be where the actual arena used to be.
Could be.
So do you have any insights as to other factors that make that desirable? Like in terms of local residential patterns there already?
I mean, like anywhere, you know, I worked as a planner. Every time you propose multi-family, multi-unit housing, it gets opposed. Every time you propose multi-unit housing in Canada, it gets opposed. I see it time and time and time and time and time again. And when that housing gets built, it's fine. And if you look at older parts of any city, you will find a huge diversity of housing types coexisting next to each other. Cornwall has, like any city, has dozens and dozens of examples of this. So I think it's, you know, you're not going to see like a 40-story building here, but something, you know. I mean, obviously, I think there, it would make a lot of sense to do something like a design charrette, something like that, to sort of sketch out a bit more of a vision and to prepare some concept plans or something like that would be very helpful. But that's for the future, I think, so...
Well, thanks for bringing your particular expertise.
Oh, you're welcome.
To the table.
Yeah, sorry I was late.
Counselor Good and Counselor MacIntosh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alex, for coming and presenting your perspective on this as a planner. Maybe it's better that you did come when you did. Some of our previous speakers did not necessarily align with your vision. And I think that that just sort of reflects the multitude of views in the community. I appreciate what you said about not having any kind of concept plan to actually reference when we're talking about this. And I think that's one of the issues that we all have to use our imagination. And our imaginations are all quite different. So when you're talking about using basically the Bob Turner slab and you're, you said, you mentioned like stack town housing, I don't know if it's possible to blend all those things together. I know when we did have that meeting with the group who's putting this together and I attended with Carrie Lynn, who unfortunately can't speak right now, our CIO Mark Bolo had presented a picture of a park that existed in another community that is a community park and that exists as part of a housing development. And it included paths and seating areas and some playgrounds. And I think there was an area for dogs and possibly, you know, potential for an area for teens. And seeing that and understanding how that could fit in with the community and maintain that kind of quality of a green space, I think that is the fear. And it's a fear I have really is of losing green space in our inner city for anything, even with the need of housing. But I guess if you were to see an ideal use of that space, what does it look like to you?
Well, I mean, I think that you would have probably low-rise housing on the Bob Turner site. I mean, the Bob Turner site is not green space. It's a vacant lot and it's ash fault. I think it would be good. I mean, sometimes framing a corner with a building can be really helpful. So to shift the park over potentially might be a good option. Cornwall has, I think, a big problem in urban design where you have a lot of empty corners. And they're not very good. That's just maybe a rough thought. But I would think something like to do stacked townhouses, which are quite economical, but also provide family-friendly units would be a really good use. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm a planner, but I'm not an architect, so it's hard sometimes to articulate that. But I think that the park really should have, you know, I feel like Cornwall, yeah, it needs better parks here. And like, I think of going to, like, I'm from, lived in Toronto for a long time. And like, there's a park that I went to that was the size of my property. It had a splash pad, a sand pit, and a playground. In a tiny park that was like the size of like three lots. And so I think that's, you know, we need to have more stuff in parks, not just have empty grass. So things that people actually use. I would think it'd be a great spot for a community garden, potentially basketball nets. You could have, you know, it's a big area. It's like two hectares or two acres, I think, approximately would be Joe St. Dennis Field. So it's, you know, there's a lot of opportunity to build a park there. I think a dog run would be another great thing to add as well in the park. But it's also, you know, it'd also be a really nice place to live if you're facing a park. But it also provides some passive surveillance, right? So you have people there to look at the park, to see if something's happening, which is also, you know, good if you're looking to deter crime or things like that as well.
For sure. It seems there's definitely, you know, there's conflicting perspectives, obviously. And the field is a home to a lot of kids, but not to a lot of others, obviously. So there's a lot to consider here. I appreciate you coming and bringing your planner perspective to this whole conversation. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Counselor MacIntosh.
Thanks, Alex, for your frank presentation. I appreciate it to come in as a person who's a planner. Interesting when you said, "Anywhere in Canada, you're going to have, when you go to build what we call public housing, you're going to have opposition." And I can think of when, back in many, many years ago, when the first public housing development was proposed for Cornwall, which was, turns out, Glendale Heights, they made sure it was so far out of town that they wouldn't disturb anybody. It was in the middle of nowhere and they thought that was just great. That, no, they didn't get any, one complaint. And then when they built the one in the corner of Gloucester and Fourth Street, there was huge opposition. It was like, "We want public housing, but we don't want it in our neighborhood," which is a familiar cry. The, to replace the football field would require us to create a football field. So we would have to, if we were going to go that route, we have to decide where we're going to move that football field. And it seems a logical place and most talked-about place is the Benson Center because we have acquired more property there from CN, I believe it was. So I think before we can move on anything, if that's where we're going to go, we have to create a football field and then look at the park. And, you know, that would be number two on the list. First list would be create a, create a new football field. You talked about stack housing. That, as a planner, how many units do you think you could put in there?
I'm not sure. You're not sure. Probably have to talk to an architect to get like a safe layout.
Yeah, that's not a fair question for a planner, yeah.
But you could probably do a couple blocks there with parking and then use the parking and trees to buffer.
Yeah. You know, as a planner, you understand that, you know, that such, they call shovel-ready property is a real plus. And the reason why we moved so fast at the corner of Ninth and Marlborough was that, my first year in council, that certain counselors saw an opportunity to buy the Kinsman Center or the Kinsman School. And at the time, a lot of people said, "Why keep creating inventory?" And look what happened. When the day the money arrived, we were ready to go. And the province, that's what they like to see in the same way. And the same one with up in Pitt Street. So I guess the big attraction for the athletic grounds, Joe St. Dennis Field, is the fact that we own the property. And that's the big one. It's, it's not easy to acquire a couple of acres of property inside the city for affordable housing at a reasonable price because build, developers can use that land and build, you know, first of all, a lot of developers own the land and it's, they're not selling for public housing. They're using that for, to build homes and make, and make a profit. So anyway, it's a, it's a bit of a juggling act here, keep a historic, a field that's been around for so long and has a certain amount of, does have history. Or do we say we're going to reinvent the whole thing and have, create more housing and still have a park and then move on from there? So it's, it's not an easy decision. There's a lot of, a lot of pros and cons, but the decision's going to have to be made in this, I would think in the next twelve months. So anyway, I really appreciate your perspective on this.
Oh, well, thanks for, thanks for that.
Further questions or comments from council? Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up the floor again. If there's anyone present tonight that would like to say a few words, bring a perspective. Good evening. If you could please state your name for the record.
My name's Gary Gale. I live in Old Orchard Avenue, right behind the Joe St. Dennis Field. I'd just like to, my particular thing is I'm a grandfather of both seven children, grandchildren, grandfather. There's no other park around where I can take them within the core or Cornwall. There is no other place. Your closest park other than there is where? Matice Park? You have to cross Montreal Road and everything else to get there. Kids from the core mile of Cornwall, and I'm not originally from Cornwall, but we've always heard the square, square mile of Cornwall. We're close almost in the core of it, I think. There is no other park in the core of Cornwall. So why do you guys want to destroy that, put hosi on it? I, I can't understand that. You're talking about building affordable hosi, but you're not going to have other areas for kids to go and play and be kids. It's not that big of area. You may seriously buy a deal for affordable hosi, but I believe it's not. I think recreational use is better, is more suited for recreational use and stay as, as it is type thing. So that's what I believe.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Counselor Good.
Yes, sir.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for presenting, Gary. Do you believe that that current use is maximizing the potential of that field?
No, I don't.
And what would you see happen?
I think the, the cement pad could be better used. Pickleball, I know with pickleball, pickleball is making coming now. That cement pad probably could be converted to pickleball, a few pickleball courts. Encourage more seniors to get there and use it. Of course, the field, that football field is probably one of the best football fields where the Wildcats are playing on right now in any other city. That's, that's an excellent field right now. It's not like it used to be. It's been proved a lot over the years. So, yeah, no, it's not being maximized use. While the council's not promoting to be maximum use anyway.
Would you be in favor of a youth space being created there?
Sure.
Okay.
As long as it suits kids.
Thank you.
I mean, we need more recreational areas. I also need a place to take my grandchildren, let them loose once in a while. But that's what I'm saying. I mean, me and the wife, we can walk up and down the street with them, but it's ideal for us and also two thousand other people too, all around us. So I'm just asking you, please reconsider or whatever your plans are, consider maintaining it for recreational use and. Okay?
Further questions or comments from council? Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fact is, the Curling Club surfaced last summer. It was open for pickleball and the place was packed. And now they're looking at possibly putting down a wall, which was, one of the walls was there to be removal, possibly making pickleball courts there for seniors. Just, just to answer the pickleball thing.
Yeah, but I just think the Bob Turner is ideally suited. It's right in the core of the city, right in the middle of the city. It's got history galore. All I hear from my relatives, older relatives, how it used to be type thing was, it'd be packed with three, four thousand people at a time. Just a lot of history there. Just don't take history away.
No, I, I also said that at one point that Bob Turner Center is a central point.
Sure it is.
For the area.
Sure it is.
Yeah. So I agree with you.
Don't give it away like that.
Further questions, comments? Yep, seeing none. Thank you. Further comments from the public? Good evening. If you could please start by stating your name.
Lex Galant.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I am one of the youth on the youth advisory committee for the youth space project, and I want to preface this whole conversation by saying that this is all my opinion and it should not immediately reflect the youth space project. Not only myself, but a lot of my friends have been kicked out of very popular spaces in Cornwall, including the Lemur Park and the Cornwall Square and all of that. And it's really important to me that we have a space where we're able to do normal things without being judged by older members of the community. And I also want to mention that over the course of me growing up, Cornwall has been more catered towards adult and senior citizens of Cornwall, and lots of different amenities that were available are no longer available because they weren't getting enough funds from the people that they were catering to. So a lot of the things that us as teenagers were able to do, instead of going to parks and doing that, are no longer available, which is why you'd see a lot of, a lot more teenagers on the streets. And I think Alexander Park is a great, great place to start phase one, but it is far in terms of location from where we wanted it to be. The Bob Turner would be a great spot to have a nice space dedicated to teenagers because Lemur Park, even though it's for everybody, we are often kicked out of that space because, because parents are afraid that we might be a bad influence to their young children. And that was also an issue that we had whenever we were thinking of spaces to go because for Lemur Park and I'm pretty sure Matice Park, there's a lot of spaces available for parents and young children. So even though it would be a nice space for Bob Turner to be for everybody, we really wanted a space dedicated just for teenagers, for them to also feel like they could belong in the community like the rest of you. And I think that's it. I just wanted to, to put my opinion out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor McIntosh.
Your worship, a couple of quick questions. So the presentation that was made about a month ago, maybe eight weeks ago, the original presentation kind of had like a wish list. These are all the things we, we would like to have. And you mentioned Alexandria Park. Do you see it as reasonable or like is there value in sort of having some things at one park and some things at the other? Or do you think it all has to kind of ultimately be at one park for it to be valuable?
I think both ideas are very, how do I say that? Both of them are very good. I think personally, we should have different amenities at different parks because there are different groups of teenagers with different ideas of what they want the park to be. So we want to make sure that everybody is heard and we want to make sure that everybody feels welcome. And I want to also show transparency in terms of the good and the bad. There are many teenagers who end up having quiffs or fights. So it's important that we have different areas and a large area for different groups of, of teenagers in order to minimize the amount of potential injuries.
Sure. Second question, of course, you're aware, there's talk of affordable housing in the Bob Turner. Do you think that the entire space needs to be dedicated as some kind of a park at the Bob Turner in light of what you just said with disagreements amongst teenagers? Or is there a way of saying, okay, if we cut it in half and said half is the park and half is housing, is that something you could see working? Or is it, gee, we really need the whole park?
I personally, whenever I had done a site check, I think that it would be a little bit unrealistic to cut it in half because there might be more calls to the police saying for noise complaints because the park would be very, very close to that housing. I think that they, the people moving there would either see the park as a place to bring their young children instead of teenagers or to end up completely moving us out from there because of noise complaints.
Interesting.
So I, I think that the green space for the Wildcats should, should remain and then beside it, where the Bob Turner is located, should be dedicated to a youth space.
Excellent. Well, Sid, you should probably consider a career in politics just. Thank you, thank you, your worship.
Counselor McIntosh.
Yeah, I want to go back to something you said, and Terry mentioned it too. You said, youth, young people are being kicked out of Lemur Park because of parents' complaint. I didn't realize we were placed by parents in this town. So you indicating that somebody calls the police, police come until you get out of the park?
Yeah. It's been.
I'd like to know what grounds the police can convict you from a park. If you're not causing any trouble.
Sorry. It's not necessarily that we were kicked out completely, but rather we were told to move from the location we were currently in to a separate location, separate from where we were before. So a common one that.
This is the bandshell?
Uh, yeah, that's, I was going to bring up a common spot that is talked about is the bandshell because it is commonly used for, to, for gatherings and for events and other things. So there's a lot of people with families who want to end up going there and that area, since it's near the street, can also be used for picnics and can be used for birthdays and other things like that, too. So if they're having a, a private event in a public space, it's very often that we are told to move locations farther from where we want it to be.
My first call tomorrow morning is going to be to Cornwall's Committee Police Service. I'm going to talk to somebody about this because I'd like to know what, how they operate with that one. Because if somebody can call the police, say, I want those people removed, and the police comply, I'd like to talk to the supervisor who's making that call.
Further questions or comments from council? Counselor Good.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to commend you so much on coming up here and speaking. I echo my colleagues' sentiments that you've got a future in politics one day or something, something big. Thank you for speaking with such candor and, and also being reasonable with the expectations and with your desires. We hear you. Alexander is, is a good phase one. And I think that this town hall has given us all a lot to chew on and think about. So I very much appreciate as a youth today that you've come up here and, and spoken to us. So thank you.
Further questions or comments? Thank you. If you could just start with your name, please.
My name's Richard Marlowe.
Thank you.
I've lived in Cornwall all my life. And so I went through all the facilities we used to have here, and I've never seen this facility as good as it is now. I played on that football field when there was hardly any grass to put lines on. I refereed football, and in the rain, we had to look for a spot of grass not to put it in the puddle, the ball in the puddle. When we first started in the OVFL, we'd have these referees, crews would come down here. At the time, we had white pants. They'd come off the field, they were gray. Now, I've seen this field being turned around. There was a lot of work being put in there. So I'd say by far the best natural turf field, I'd say in eastern Ontario, maybe Ontario. Also, I saw a program, a football program that had disappeared before. I played in Optimus Football. That disappeared for about twenty years. And also, when that disappeared, so did the high school programs. I seen this, this program being built up from scratch. It's, I have to say, it's a prototype where anybody who was to contact Kirby Kaplan and find out how he did it, would get an education. You've got little guys, you're teaching them properly how to play football, how to tackle all the way up. Look at the success we're having with the U on, under U eighteen football team. These guys, and we've had quite a few that have graduated from that program to university. So if Cornwall's not proud of that, I don't know what it'll take for Cornwall to be proud And I see you want to put some condos or some housing. How much housing are you going to be able to put there? Very important. You need space for cars and that. How much are you going to, how much of that land's going to be taken up? Most importantly, I feel that we'd be taking away from our youth opportunities, and I do mean not just big behemoth football players. He's got a football program in the summertime, flag football. It's not always tackle football. So, no, I think it would be a mistake if we were going to put housing there and lose this. It seems to me that we have an attack on our green space, and that's an important piece
Thank you. Questions and comments from council? Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the, one, one question for you. You didn't go back to baseball when I was coaching you.
Yes.
The Bob Turner, the Bob Turner Center was a busy place for baseball. The Legion took it over down by the water, it's just as good. I spent time down there umpiring, too. So I taught you how to play ball and then I umpired you here. Thank you for, for having the stones to stand up and speak up for what you think is right.
We gotta stand up for our youth.
You're right.
And that was, that's our future. And if we don't, what are we going to have?
I think the point I, I wanted to make was we made that move from a baseball to, from the Bob Turner to the Legion Park. Is there a possibility that we can do the same thing with football? Although I think Kirby has done a great job with the kids, and they asked me to give out trophies last year, and I appreciated that. We need that space, but we need that space for kids that don't play football, kids that don't play hockey, kids that, that don't play sports that cost you so much money that they can't afford to do it. So we need a big recreational space for young people up until about seventeen or eighteen years old. So we need a big recreational space for young people up until about 17 or 18 years old. Sid, is there a possibility that we can have the football field and a, a youth center?
We lost, we lost a basketball court when the YMCA shut down. And I, I don't play basketball, but you hear that they can't find a court, an indoor court.
Basically, Rick, that's a problem with the school board. The school board won't allow us to use their gyms, so...
That's, and that's old. That's old. Kirby is lucky sometimes he can play, go at CCVS. So, I don't know. To me, it would be a mistake to, to just put condos there.
Counsel McIntosh?
Yeah, I just want to correct one misconception when it comes to school boards, doesn't do with Richard, that I helped run the, for three years, the mini pro basketball program. We had no trouble, and I mean no trouble getting high school gyms. We had La Heritage, we had General Banyer, and we had St. Lawrence High School around our programs. And the only thing they asked is clean up, have, pay the janitor to clean up after and here are the keys, they gave us the keys for the building. So the school board, at least at one time, was very open to using their gyms on Saturdays for recreation and every basketball tournament, they still play at CCVS, the mini basketball. It has nothing to do with what you said, but just saying, correcting what Sid suggested me, the school board gives them a hard time. They don't, there's certain rules have to follow. And United County's mini basketball, which Kyle Bergeron's father was very involved in at one time, they had full use of the schools.
I have clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
During a time that I was on the recreational department, they did not allow young kids to play basketball in the high school. That has changed and I appreciate that. And I apologize for saying it because if it was the same way as it was before, then that's why I said that. Now that, that's changed, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Further questions or comments from counsel? Okay, thank you. Further comments from the public?
Your Honor, counsel, I didn't introduce myself properly at the beginning. Some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is George Lewis and I run Champ's Eastside Boxing Club. I just want to make a point to you guys. Don't underestimate the, what the impact of a youth center like Terry's proposing and what these kids want, has. My boxing club is owned by the city and the city was gracious enough to let me use the building and they made it very affordable for me to be able to run a program there. I totally understand where a guy like Kirby, I don't know how my, the last fellow there, he said how Kirby does it. Kirby does it because he puts himself out there and he does what other people aren't willing to do. And I know Kirby well and when I started the program there in 2001 and the city was gracious enough to let, let us have the building. The building had been empty for about five, six years to my knowledge, been used for storage, heating the place so that the pipes wouldn't freeze at St. Joseph's Park on Jarvis Street, 223 Jarvis. Drug deals were going on, on, in the park, kids weren't playing in the park. When we came, it cleaned up. We basically ran them out and we didn't run them out by force, we ran them out by just being there. Our presence was there and slowly it cleaned up. In defense of the police, sometimes we've had parking issues on Jarvis Street with the boxing club and if the police get a call, they have to respond. So I can understand if they get a call, there's a complaint at a park, they have to respond. That's just their, their job and their duty and, because I've experienced it myself. What I'm going to ask you guys to consider is don't underestimate the power and the impact that a youth center has in you people, you guys here who run our city, okay? You should do everything you can to help these programs to flourish, to not only exist but to flourish and to, to do everything you can to help them get funding, to do everything you can to help them grow, okay? Because they make a huge impact just by being there. There's been times where, where I wonder where my sanity is and why I do what I do and most of the publicity, a lot of publicity was garnered from my club because of my son. My son was a world-class athlete and he was world-rated. We may never see that in the history of Cornwall again with boxing, just saying, simply because of the circumstances and how things happened. And, but I, there's a lot of stories that haven't been told. I had a young man, I got to tell you a couple of quick stories. First, I had a young lady who boxed for me. She went off to college in Kingston. One night she took a ride home. The cab driver took her to a dark place. The cab driver tried to have her way with her. Chokes me up to tell this story because I so focused as a coach on winning, but that night there, she fought off her attacker and she didn't get raped. Her and her mother came back to thank me. Don't thank me. It's just because this place existed. If you have a youth center where people go, that same thing can happen, one life. Today, that young lady works in the healthcare, okay? She's done very well, she's got two beautiful kids and is happily married. What would have happened to her had she gotten raped? You know what? I thank God that God put me in a place and let me, you know, I have a reputation as a passionate guy and I'm hard on my athletes and I am because life is hard and the ring's a hard place. Another story I'm going to tell you just quick, I had a young man came to me about just turning 18 years old, been arrested several times, stealing cars, drugs, selling drugs, beating people up, a lot of stuff he didn't get caught for, some of it he did. Went back home, his dad was trying to straighten him out, brought, brought him to the boxing club to let out some of his frustrations. He didn't think it was an ideal solution. Kid quit smoking, he quit drugging, he quit drinking, turned his life around, simply because somebody said, if you want, he discovered something that he loved more than that life. Simple. And he turned his life around. He ultimately made the decision himself and I wouldn't let him, I wouldn't let him compromise. There was no compromise. You do things right, you meet the standards or you don't go forward. He became a provincial champion, learned a trade and today is doing very well with his trade and he's done some work for the city as a matter of fact. And I'm not going to name his name and I'm not going to tell you what it is, but he's done very successful. What would have happened to him had we not been there? I, again, I thank God that we were there. So anything you can do, this council, mayor, administration, that you can do to help people like Terry Muir, to help people like, like Kirby Kaplan, please do and please consider it, okay? Because one day, one of those young people, okay, that's had a bad home life or have not been fortunate, okay, and that's had bad breaks in life, may be sitting at one of these seats and they'll pay it forward. So don't underestimate the power of a youth center and don't brush it away. And the more sports we have for our young people and the more things we do to be involved and the more people, we need to encourage volunteers to come out, not shun them away, okay? It takes some more crazy people like me to, to do it and Kirby's one of them. And that's why Kirby makes it work. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you guys, okay? Do whatever you can to help Terry Muir's project. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Any comments or questions from counsel? Thank you. Further comments?
Bonjour. Michel Lalonde. I live on Old Orchard Avenue.
Thank you.
We mentioned a while ago, Mr. Mayor, about richness and poorness, people, rich, how do you measure being rich? You measure being rich by what you have. What does the city of Cornwall have? What goes into your mind when you think of what we have? You'll think about the waterfront? Did you think about between 41 Old Orchard and three Old Orchard, all those houses? Did you think about that? None of you thought about that? I lived there, but no one thought about that as being a richness. What we have are things like parks. Now, I'm 75. Of all my years that I remember, not one single house was built at the Bob Turner Center or the athletic grounds, not one. Why is that? Because someone before us thought that that was a good idea and they dedicated that area to kids, to sports, to blowing off steam. I taught for 33 years, high school. I know what adolescents need. They need to blow off steam because if they, if you don't let them blow off the steam, they will blow it off, but they'll be calling one of those guys over to take care of it.
They'll be burning down batting cages.
That's basically what I have to say here tonight. And when I look at it, it says, a lot of people before us left us that piece of ground, that gra, that green space. They left us, they left it for the youth of their time. Are we going to do the same and leave it as a legacy to the kids that are our kids? And like my, my neighbor here says, I have my grandkids that come down, seven and four, and they go there and they, grandma's there with, they go there and they burn steam. I implore you, let's, oh, one more thing I wanted to say. Maybe some of you have not seen this or have seen it before. Sunday morning, program on CBS every Sunday morning, about 15 years ago, there was, the commentator was Charles Kuralt and he would come in every Sunday and once in a while he'd say, we made ourselves a gift today in the States. So we gave ourselves a park. And that, when they gave a park, it was 150,000 acres somewhere in the wilderness, but they gave themselves a park. We have a park and a mist, I'm sorry for the gentleman there, but a miss, mixed use, a use park, nice little path and a little seat, you don't blow steam there. You blow steam on a football field, pickleball, tennis, basketball, throw them a ball, they'll run with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Thank you. I know you've been very patient, if you'd like to come up and speak. Just ask that you please start by stating your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sharon Lozo. I would just like to say, start off by saying that it was very interesting to hear all the speakers today. I do believe that the Bob Turner Center should be preserved. I think it has a lot of history behind it. I do think that it's a very good center location. From my personal opinion, I, I do think that it's more accessible for the community since it's more centered town. I do think the youth need a place to go where they can play sports, use the field. It's a, it's a beautiful field, lots of space. I think it should be accessible to all people to enjoy, although I do see that, you know, as far as the sporting events, it's more like centered towards the youth. I do remember as a child going to the Bob Turner Center and doing activities there inside the facility and I think that would be a, a nice thing to have for the children and the youth as well. I also think as far as the issue with housing, I do see that the need for housing, but I do feel that the location is not the right spot. I think it would be better if it would be more accessible for grocery stores, shopping and things like that. I also think the importance of preserving that area is really important because I think Cornwall is known for that area a lot in terms of recreation. I would like to see the Bob Turner, it's be remembered and like maybe something commemorative be in that area there in that spot. My father used to work for the city of Cornwall. He was a facility supervisor and Cornwall Parks and Recreation Supervisor and he worked there for 42 years and he worked with Bob Turner as well. So it's a, I thought it would be important for me to come out to speak tonight on the importance of preserving the, the Bob Turner Center for the youth and for all the children in, in Cornwall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Thank you very much. Further public comments?
Christine Terrio. I'm not usually talking, so, oh my gosh, but, sorry. Not like me. But I just wanted to share like a couple little things. I live on McConnell and I'm close to Matisse Park and I have small children, like a one and a five-year-old and my brother lives close to there and I'm talking to him about bringing my kids to that park. He kind of said like after supper time, it's kind of taken over by teens and I've kind of seen that where we've been there. And the one day, there was like a, a chair near the park and like a bunch of teenagers came and they had like a really big stick and they were like hitting it and like, I've had where like my kids had to walk around a bunch of teens to get like on the play structure and things like that, which the teens were nice, but just like in regards to that space being maybe like not teen-oriented kind of thing. And I, this is the first that I hear of Alexander Park being recommended as an alternative and I remember as a teen walking there and I used to live from the east end and we would go there and there wasn't anything there, but I just think it'd be a great place to add things and it has the visibility on Ninth Street, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from counsel? All right, thank you. Excuse me, further public commentary? Any further public commentary? Okay, I'll ask one more time if there's any further public commentary this evening. Seeing none. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to come here tonight. Public engagement like this is important. I'd like to thank you all again for taking the time out of your schedules to come here for those of you that contributed. No decision will be made tonight, as indicated, we can't advance any, any business tonight, but your comments will be taken and when we make our decision, will be taken to heart when we decide what's coming forward. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counsel Ngungjo, Counsel Bennett, all in favor? Kerry, thank you. Good evening. Carrie, thank you. Good evening.